Okay, I have a 7:30. So we're going to begin the board meeting with the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, with their God, in the midst of all this, liberty and justice We're starting with a public hearing to consider proposed resolution to authorize the mayor of the village of Baldensville to execute and submit an application to the county of Anadaga for the 2023 community development block grant funding cycle. Could I have a reading of the proof of publication?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York and pursuant to resolution of the village board of the village of Baldensville adopted March 16th, 2023, a public hearing will be held at the village board on the village of Baldensville at the village hall, 16 West Genesee Street, Baldensville, New York, 13027, on the sixth day of April, 2023, at 7:30 PM, to consider a proposed resolution to authorize the mayor of the village of Baldensville to execute and submit an application to the county of Anadaga for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG funding cycle. A copy of the proposed application, including proposed projects, may be examined by any interested party at the office of the village clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, any interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the village board of the village of Baldensville dated March 16th, 2023, Baldensville, New York.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal?
The proposal was to approve the parks?
The proposal is to submit a five-year plan to Anadaga County that has laid out one of them. The highest-ranked proposal is improvements to McCary Park.
Just seeking grant funding for various projects. Every year, we have to submit what we would consider projects for five years out so that they can consider whether or not they would want to fund any of the projects for us.
No apartments?
Well, that was item number...
No apartments.
Is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposal? Hearing, no comments. Could I have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the village board meetings from March 16th, 2023, and March 21st, 2023? Make a motion.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to citizens' comments. First of all, we have a couple of people that are listed here. We'll hit them first. Kevin McMahon?
Perfect.
You're up. Come to the mic, introduce yourself to the board.
Good evening, Kevin McMahon. I am here today to seek, gosh, waiver of the application for Paper Mill Island. This year is going to be our third year. We host a yoga class every Wednesday evening throughout the course of the summer, so this is our third year where we apply for the waiver for the fee for Paper Mill Island.
Kevin, in our discussions, knowing you were coming, do you charge for participants?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's that and the insurance, but it's definitely a great opportunity just for the community to get together. I know Mr. Mayor was going to do downward-facing dog. I think he's still planning on doing that one of these years.
We'll come... That may be a fundraiser. Does anybody have any questions for Kevin?
Do you require any resources from the village on a weekly basis?
No.
Okay. You just go out and set your stuff up and...
Yeah, we have like a portable speaker that we bring, you know, and then like a Bluetooth mic as well, so nothing that we require from the village. And as a matter of fact, if there is a concert or any sort of event, we'll just cancel for that evening and allow for the village themselves to, you know, host whatever events.
So when would it begin and when would it... How long would it run? How's that?
We are hoping to start May 1st, or not May 1st, but the first Wednesday of May, and then run through the extent of September. So last year, I think we were able to make it just towards the end of September before we started to have to put on some additional layers. So I do, actually, now that I recall, our last class had to breathe heavily, you know, because it was quite cold out, so...
And our clerk has that schedule all set?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm just going to ask our superintendent and our chief of police, if either of you have any issues with these yoga classes over the years?
That's good. That's a good thing. You're causing tremendous problems.
I know those Zen people are usually a pretty rowdy group, but I just, I figured that was the answer, but I just wanted to...
Turn your power on if you're happy, right?
Yes, exactly. Breathing's too loud.
Okay. Do we need to...
A motion for the...
I'll make a motion to waive the fee.
I was... Yeah, I'll figure it. Since we've already had discussion, I assume there is no more. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carry on.
Thank you.
Namaste.
You're welcome. Okay. Second on the citizen comment list is Paul DeFleece.
Obviously, they thought I was a little taller. Good evening, I'm Paul DeFleece. I live at 17 East Onida Street in Baldensville, and I've come here tonight with several of my neighbors, but certainly not everybody who could be here, who are alarmed by the proposal by the Board of Education to build a road, a two-lane road behind our house and add about 100-car parking lot that would take up the green area that separates our house from the current parking lot of the school or from the building of the school. And some of the houses are very close. I don't know exactly how measured, but if you put a road in and you have to have access and make the road wider and things like this, they would be very, very close to the houses that border that road. Also, very disappointed that the school district did not reach out to us. We were never notified that a proposal was going to take place regarding this road. And as you can see in the letter, I was also disappointed that there were people in the village payroll, on the village payroll, who knew that this was being discussed by the Board of Education, and they never thought to advise the board and the mayor to ask, to maybe, as a courtesy, notify the 14 houses on East Onida Street who border that, who will border that road and parking lot. The Board of Education is having their vote on May 16th, and this will be two parts. There's a budget vote for different school renovations, that's called the capital improvement project, and then there is the regular school board, the school budget process. So I think you would wind up voting for two things. The, in the way they've packaged the program, there's a new gym, some new science labs, and a new pool in the high school, but that's not, that's not separated from the road concept. So in other words, you're going to, people could vote for that, but they can't not vote for the road. It'll all be in a package. And I'm sure they packaged it for a reason that way, rather than take the flak of whatever, just like they didn't notify the neighbors, even if they were or were not required to do so. And I think there's some, at least debate on that, that should they have notified us? And in any ways, they're not in the spirit of being a good neighbor. I've lived there for 38 years, and the traffic right now is bad, okay? But what has the school district done to mitigate that? Have they suggested in classes, hey, this is an environmental nuisance, mess, that, you know, you guys are all being driven here, not all, that many of you are being driven here by your parents who wait in line, get frustrated and stuff like this, but there's a way we could change that because you could take a bus or you could carpool. If 100 people carpool, you just saved 50 cars. I mean, that's, but a carpool, I mean, you know, that's not genius work. And has the Board of Education thought anything? Well, we don't know because they've never, they never asked for our input, they never asked for any ideas, they just went ahead and said, let's take that little access road, a sliver on Route 48, that used to be the main bus entrance till about 1966, and instead let's make that a two-lane road, enter and exit there, go down and, you know, we can disturb all that green area and doesn't make any difference, repave it over, pave it over, pave it over, I know it's wet, pave it over, and then the cars can turn around and exit back on Route 48. When they changed it from a blinking light to a red light there at Onida Street in Oswego, they made, the DOT, I believe, made a decision to put a blinking light warning people of the light coming over the hill. It's a blind, it's somewhat of a blind spot, it's not totally blind, but they, they thought enough to do that, okay? Now, if you do that, you're going to have cars coming out of this proposed parking ladder, road access, going left and right, and if four cars are backed up at the light, you have even less room to react that when you've come over the hill, now you're right there, there's cars going in and out, in and out. It's, you know, do I know somebody's going to get killed there? No, but do they have to do that? Are there other alternatives? Today, I ate breakfast with a man who's a bus driver for West Genesee. They tweaked their hours of some of the school buildings so that everybody wasn't coming at about the same time, and guess what? The traffic improved. Wow. You know, they could tweak Dergi start as opposed to Baker start, and maybe things would improve. Last week, my wife and I counted on Monday and Friday, Monday and Thursday, the number of vacant parking spots on campus. There were 480 cars parked on campus, there were 230 spots empty. Why are we proposing to build a parking lot at the bottom of the swell? I'm talking about there, I think you know where I'm talking about. Okay. Why are we proposing to do that? I just, I don't understand it. And what we're asking for tonight, I don't know that we, I guess, can we just raise your hand if you've been here on East Onida Street?
Or for that.
Or for that? I mean, okay. We're concerned, okay? And there were people, Harlow, you know Harlow Kisselstein? Had an operation today, otherwise he'd have been there, you know? And so we are very concerned. We will become an island surrounded by roads, parking lots. And I think the village owes us a piece of support. We are village taxpayers, and I'm hoping that the village would authorize us to be able to meet with so-called experts, no, I apologize for that, with experts that belong to the village, village attorney, maybe the zoning board or the planning board, to say, what can we do now if this, in the event this thing is passed? If it's, if it's not passed, then we don't have to worry about it, but, or at least not for this year. But could we meet with, you know, we haven't met with the village, we haven't met with the Board of Education, could we at least meet to say, what options are there? There's one house, the Addle there lives at 1 East Onida Street. That's a, that's a registered house on the historic, let's see, the how... National Historic Registry, as is the house on the hill up above, where, by the way, everybody will be exiting out of that new road, that new proposed road. And there's, there's rules and regulations about building things near historic houses. There's a whole compliance that has to happen. Can the village take the lead in supporting our neighbors and make sure the state has all the information necessary to make an informed decision about whether they would say the project can go forward or not? So we're not here to ask for a conclusion tonight. You've been, you've passed out, you know, I handed out a somewhat of a petition paper, I guess, and I see you've all got it. We'd hope you could read it carefully, and can we get the assurance or authorization, I'm looking at the mayor now, to be able to work with whomever you think is the best person to work with on this, to at least see what options are still available in the event this is passed? So that's the ask. We're not asking you to, the ask is, can we, can you lend the expertise that you have within the village to work with a group of select people from East Onida Street and maybe some other streets as well, and see if there's something we can do to mitigate, if it does pass, to mitigate the impact, and if it doesn't pass, we'll go away. It's an inconvenience tax raising this, that's what I call it, an inconvenience tax for those who are inconvenienced about dropping off their kids. And they don't have to worry about it, they don't have to do it, they don't have to drop off their kids. They can just have them take the bus or carpool.
Paul, are you looking for a direction of who to talk to with the state?
Well, yes, exactly. We, you know, we're at a loss. This sprang on us about a week ago, okay? So who do we talk to? I don't know. I know there was a legal opinion offered about, in the case of Monroe versus the city of Rochester, but I also see in that, and I'm not a lawyer, but I see in the plain reading of that, that there are like nine factors you should consider. It's not automatic that they can do anything they want to any piece of property a school or government entity owns. I'd like to discuss it with the village attorney.
Has the school board at all yet?
What's it?
Have you been to the school?
No, they haven't had a meeting, and this is a vacation. I've made calls into there, they know I'm lurking around.
Maybe the interim superintendent?
Well, yeah, no, I'm trying to get an appointment with her right now. It's not Joe because he doesn't take over until July.
I'd submit something in writing, too, to the school board to have it added to, I don't know when their next meeting is, but to have it on their agenda, but I believe you have to submit something in writing to have that done.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd want to meet with someone at the state, that's a state road. We can't really, I don't think we could lend our, our village attorneys to fight, your personal fight, though.
But the village could go on record saying, we do not consider this a safe environment, and this would create a hazard. They closed that entrance there for a reason. 15 years ago or so, when they put that light in, they closed it, and they only opened it three years ago to allow like six or eight handicap buses to go in and pick up kids. That's all the use is approved for.
After they opened it and they allowed staff parking down there, and they had a sign that said, right turn only if you exit.
It's not there now.
I know it's not there now.
It's not there now, and it's going to be a two-lane road. That isn't going to be what's going to happen. I mean, I don't want to differ with you, that might be the intent.
It didn't work.
It didn't work then, and it's not going to work now. You know? And again, I'm empathetic to people who are waiting in line, but they don't have to, they have such a choice. If you bring your kid, you, maybe there's a tie-up on Route 31 if you're coming from Radisson. Okay, well, that's, that's what happens.
With that, school being its own municipality, and that being a state road, like was mentioned, we really can't do anything other than say, we support what you're saying and think it could be an issue, but I don't, we haven't got a hammer or anything that we can do anything about it, do we?
No, I mean, the question, of course, I, have they gone through seeker?
Don't know.
Because it is an action by the school board, they would have to go through seeker. It may be determined to be a type one. I don't know if they've done any, any review of that for environmental aspects.
Right, right.
Does the seeker have to be done before their vote? Can they vote and say, we'll get a seeker later?
No, because you're supposed to do that before you take your action.
If they hold a vote and it's passed, but they didn't do it, is it an invalid vote?
Well, I'm not going to render any opinions, but if they, if they vote on the budget items, that's one thing. Make, approving the plans is another. Those are two separate things. Just like we, the village adopts a budget on an annual basis, and if the village wants to widen a road or do something with sidewalks, that's totally different, even though it's been, the payment for it, it may be approved in the budget. It's taking the action that's, they would have...
Well, and that would be the next step. If it is approved, can, can the village support us in either personnel recommendations or whatever, that the process, the expenditure of that budgeted money, $63 million, so just in case you're wondering, could, that they could be, somehow be able to stop that particular part of it and add another swimming pool? I don't care what they do with it, but, but could they stop, I mean, would you be in favor of supporting, based on the safety of Route 48 and safety concerns in Route 48 and the destruction of the neighborhood who is just sitting there, okay? And be an island between two parking lots, the church and the, and the school district? I don't know.
Paul, if you do me a favor, leave your phone number where they're at a clerk, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
All right. I appreciate that.
I'm going to talk to Joe DeBarbury, and I'm going to try to contact somebody from the state DOT just to see if they're even aware of it, because I got to think there's got to be some concern when they are aware of it about the ingress and egress on Oswego Street and blocking that street up, and I don't even know if they're aware of it or if they've cleared it with the school and said it's okay, but let me call you tomorrow.
All right. Has, the village hasn't, you, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the village hasn't been asked to opinion on whether or not that's a safe or unsafe intersection proposal, meaning the egress?
We met, we met with the school several months ago, I'm at a Zoom meeting. Lieutenant Lockwood was involved, John Tonello from the planning board was involved, and they just explained that they were interested in the possibility, that they were looking for another way to get into the school district, into the school grounds, and this seems like the only way they could do it.
They didn't like to go to...
I expressed concerns about the traffic situation on Oswego Street. Lieutenant Lockwood, similar concerns, but it was a kind of a rough plan, and the next thing I knew, I got a mailer in, you know, from the school saying this was on their agenda. So let me do some phone calls tomorrow, I'll call you amongst those phone calls, okay?
Mr. Mayor, and now, last point, did they ask you about going, exiting through, near the Episcopal Church? There's a walking path now, but you could exit, if you wanted to build a road, they could exit through the Episcopal Church.
I'm not sure the Episcopal Church would be very happy with that.
They might be, but they're unhappy with it as now, I can tell you that already. So, but the other one is, did they, how about Candlewick? The path behind Dergi. Want to make a road there, or did citizens know and complained? What a novel idea that would have been. I appreciate the call tomorrow.
Okay, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
You said thank you.
I said thank you.
Oh, all right. Thank you. They do.
Are there any other citizens that wish to address the board?
Anybody want to support?
You state your name, where you live, and...
My name is Dan Coogan. I'm a part of the Baldensville Little League, I'm on the board. I think once a year, I come in and talk to you all and thank you for your time. I'll start off with good news. The Little League was awarded a three-year contract with the state, so we will be hosting state sectional play for 12U baseball and 12U softball. So that brings about eight to 10 teams into the area that will stay in our hotels and stay, eat, you know, food in the, in the area and, and, you know, work in the community or live in the community for at least a couple of weekends in July. I want to thank Chuck and the mayor for everything that they've done at the park. We've really made great strides, and that would, that actually helped us to, to get the award. On that note, though, last year, we had the, you know, the parking lot was in disrepair, and so the village had re-oiled and stoned the parking lot. The one thing that we are still deficient, though, is that we don't have stripes or lines on the parking lot, and last year during play, it created havoc for everybody parking pretty much anywhere, and we really need all of those spaces when, you know, we're playing on a Saturday or especially if we're going to be hosting big tournaments. So what I'm here for tonight is to ask, we've gotten quotes, the Little League is willing to pay for it, at least initially. It's not the Little League's responsibility, and it really shouldn't come out of the program funds for the Little League, but the Little League was willing to pay for it if we can plant it into the budget at least for 2024 to get reimbursement for it. We have two quotes. The first was $2,500, the second was $1,300. The quote for $1,300 is Tarvia Seal, which is a well-known, you know, striper in the area. And so the ask from the village is, you know, in consideration of at least a budget item for 2024 to be reimbursed for the $1,300 if we pay for it, you know, ourself. We have a unique opportunity right now. We don't start play until April 15th, so we have, Tarvia will come next week and do the striping, so as I said, our board voted and we've agreed to, you know, at least pay for it initially.
I would need, though, a legal opinion about reimbursement.
Well, property, the owner of the, of the lot itself is whom?
The village of Baldensville.
We are.
And I have the, I have the agreement.
It's our park.
It's our, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can't generally use public money for private, even not for profit benefit. However, if it's, if it's, it is a village, it's village property, so if that's something that's necessary, and the board determines that it's necessary for maintenance of the village, of the village lot, that would be appropriate, but I need to look into the idea of...
Reimbursing?
Reimbursing.
We discussed this in DPW, and, you know, you mentioned you're going to bring in people into town. Room occupancy tax goes to a county tourism group. The county collects the room occupancy tax, they're going to, these people are going to be staying in motels. They might be able to offer assistance, I would think, because there's other pots to reach into other than the village, is what I'm saying. There's many cookie jars out there. I'm not sure exactly how you go about that, but I would keep them in mind also because you're, we know it's not going to do much for the village in terms of, we don't have motels, but...
We have one.
We have one, yeah.
Couple Airbnbs.
But in any, I was just thinking, I know we also discussed the two towns have agreed that they'd be part of it, but they seem to renig on that frequently?
Yeah, I have the, the operation agreement here, and under section 13, it does say the village agrees to be responsible for maintenance of maintenance, of the maintenance buildings within the park, hard plumbing restroom facilities, driveways, roadways, parking lots, and supply of water services, and removal of collected refuse. So it is, it is in the agreement that, you know, that the village would be responsible for the, you know, cost of the maintenance of the parking lots.
Okay, so then it would be up to the villages whether they determine striping was essential or not?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can you further explain the issues that you had because it wasn't striped? What, what did you have?
On a, yeah, on a Saturday without any lines, people parked everywhere, and if you're familiar with it, it is a big open area, so we did have, we lost a lot of parking spots because of the way...
People don't park efficiently. Somebody's...
How many parking spots did the plan that you got from the striper give you?
I don't, I don't have that, I don't have that plan, but it was all calculated out by a GPS map.
And just so we know, there was issues in the parking lot last year, and we were going to get some help with the parking lot, and all that fell through, and we put $18,000 or almost $19,000 into that parking lot last year. So we, we are keeping up on the maintenance on the parking lot.
The parking lot is great, it's just, it'll be a free-for-all if we don't have lines.
And the issues that fell through were that the towns had initially said they would help with the...
Yes.
Funding, and then they did not.
Correct.
Correct.
Do you need the whole parking lot stripped? Because I'm familiar with that parking lot. It seems like the only free-for-all area is that upper base of it. I mean, it seems like down below, it's pretty, you can only park on one side or the other.
You can only park on one side or the other, yeah, but.
To spend that, have you looked at all, quote, just getting striping at the top?
No, we didn't. We looked at the whole parking lot just because of the number of spaces. If somebody parks in diagonally, then we lose.
Yeah, I know. Well, we're talking, I mean, if I could do this for $600, and you lose a couple of spots because some park's a little wonky there. I mean, honestly, you guys know all the guys up there anyways, the teams, and you tell the coaches at the beginning of the year, please make sure your people are parking correctly. I understand the top part, that's going to get sloppy up there. I get that. But as far as the bottom portion, so I was just, you know, if we could kind of do it, save a little bit money, a bit of the taxpayers' money, I'd like a quote for that personally. I could kind of get behind that.
And Bruce brings up a good point, though, too. I mean, if we could get the county involved, because frankly, they're going to be receiving a lot of the benefits of these tournaments coming in, which is awesome. You guys are doing that. I applaud you for that, but that's all.
It was Dan?
Yeah, Dan.
You have two quotes?
Yes.
Could you get copies of those quotes to the village?
Yeah, I have them.
And have you already authorized?
Yes.
The one company to come in next week and?
We have to have it done. We have, like I said, we have a unique opportunity. Nobody's there next week.
And are you aware of that?
Actually, we're over there trying to get it swept now. Because they asked us to sweep it, so they could do it, and we're over there trying to help them with that.
Yeah, because if we don't do it before the season starts, there will be no opportunity to do it once the season starts.
The president told me they're going to do it Monday or Tuesday.
Who owns the parking lot outside of?
Let me make a phone call tomorrow to the tourism. I'll contact the county and just to see if they're, if that's a viable, you know, maybe if they came up with part of it, it would be easier for us to pay some of it. You know, I understand the situation, and I know that last year, there was a lot of discussion about work being done over there. And Van Buren made it very clear that it is our obligation, and they have no intention of contributing any money. So that's, then that's a dead direction to go. I don't know about Lysander. You know, maybe they would split the cost with us. Worth checking, I'll see if I can check on that, too.
In the interim, can I ask our treasurer how much money, if we would have $1,300, we might find in the Parks Department budget, our parks?
Absolutely, good.
See, in that case, I would like to, if they're going to grow, why don't, I'd rather not get into the reimbursement thing. Get the bill to the village directly. You know, you've got the quotes. If we have those quotes, that'll fit our procurement policy.
And then we can get the county to?
And then we would vote on it.
I gotta question for Chuck. We own the parking lot outside of Mercer Park. Does it stripe?
Ours is striped. We did stripe them last year.
The Cary Park, is the lower section of that stripe?
It is. Yep.
Is there striping in Liberty Park?
No.
Okay, what other parks am I missing?
Um.
There's parking in the Ville Square that's striped.
Right. Yep.
So the majority of our parks are striped.
They were. We just did them last year.
I would be in support of, especially with the amount of use that this park gets me exceed.
Might as well just stripe it all.
Park we have.
Yeah, on a, on a Saturday, we have that, you were talking about the upper and lower, the entire lot, if you've been on there on a Saturday, the entire lot's full, and, and we park in the grass, you know, beyond the.
So does this require some kind of motion?
My only other question would be, what's the lifespan, anticipated lifespan of the striping?
They tell you now, you got to do it every two, three years. That's what the guy told us. He says, you're going to see that start wearing out in three years.
Maybe because if it's gravel and oil, it's not.
Yeah, right. And they're sweeping, they're trying to get most of the stone off it, but, um, yeah, it'll probably have to be looked at in five years.
Is there a longevity difference between the two different quotes that we had as far as the materials they're using? Is one, like a hot patch versus a cold patch, you know, there's a difference in that?
It's probably how much paint they're putting down. But I'm not sure where you got them from. The gentleman we had do ours, we got some really good prices on his, and that seems a little high over there. But I'm not sure where you got your prices from.
Yeah.
There's a gentleman, there's a gentleman in town here that does it. And he did real good by it.
Three quotes for the procurement process? Or three quotes, yeah?
I don't think it's, it's got to be over a certain price.
What kind of thing have you signed with them at this point in time? I mean, is this something we could put out for bid, too, or like?
I don't, we don't have time for that. They don't have time for that.
We started April 15. Too small to bother bidding the process.
I'd like to make a motion that we tried to find money out of the parks budget, which we have.
And could we also ask Chuck to reach out to the local guy and see?
I can do that.
Unless you've already guaranteed this other person?
I think Bill has talked to the guy already, but I wouldn't be opposed to getting, you know, if he's cheaper and we can get him next week within our window.
Right.
We can make a phone call tomorrow.
Yeah.
And you might be, if you can just get me who they are, they might be the same guy, I'm not sure.
You don't have the quotes with you tonight?
They're on my phone.
Okay, send it, if you can send it to me, that'd be good. Okay, yeah, we'll just send them to.
And do we need a motion authorizing that expenditure out of our parks funds? Do you?
No, I don't.
No. I mean, okay.
Right.
Let's get it done.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Mayor? I forgot you're up there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? If not, we'll move on to, we don't even do trustees comments? Okay.
Do that after.
Annual appointments.
I think most of us feel like we've reached our limit.
Ouch, ouch. We're just getting going.
Did anything else from us, or can we be excused?
You don't want to be here for the next part. This is going to take a long.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We, we should make everybody have to stay, huh?
I was going to say. I said they asked if they could be excused.
Do you want that road or no?
Most people don't.
See how badly you don't want that road.
Sally's in it for the long haul.
Before I start this, go in the back. Did you guys want us, yeah, you here for anything specific?
Well, we live on East Onida, so we came to listen.
Okay, but now you're.
She's interested in the Democratic House, so.
Okay, very good.
That's good.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the appointment of Baldwin, Sutphen, and Friteschi, PLLC as a?
Hold on, Bruce. We get a motion to approve the whole page?
Yeah.
You don't have to read it comfortable with it, Jamie?
Oh, I don't have to read it? You just say?
Come on, Dick. I wanted to see him read it.
The appointments listed on the first page. That's all you have to say.
Okay, could I have a motion? You guys can make up the motion.
I will make a motion then to approve the appointments listed on the first page of our annual appointments.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? Did everybody look at it?
Yep.
Yeah, there's really no changes.
I really don't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Gee, I didn't know we.
This is a big bummer right now.
I did. I didn't want to say anything. I wanted to.
Then I don't have to know how to pronounce anything.
No.
I'm going to have a motion to approve.
Don't worry about the.
The second page.
I'll make a motion to approve the second page.
I will second it.
Discussion? Please look at it a little bit, just in case you're going to get messed up. Do we have to also include the fees page as part of page two?
Nope. It's its own, separate.
The fees page is on page two.
Oh.
Is it? Okay.
Copy is attached.
And have any of the fees changed?
Copy's not attached.
I couldn't read that.
Well, that was on your email, that's why.
I couldn't read that email you sent regarding the free.
It's the same ones that were on from, from last year. Nothing changed.
We didn't change any fees.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay. When we add kayaks, can we add fees as the season goes on during the year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Um.
Opposed?
Can I, wait, yeah, no, sorry. The item right under the fees schedule, it shall be that the village's policy to waive permit fees for small projects and signs submitted for non-for-profit civic organizations, oh, the waiver shall, the permit fee does not exceed $99. Okay, never mind. So our $100 fee that gets charged to put banners up in the village does not fall under this. So it's, if there, if there is any sort of fee less than that, okay. That just threw me for a second because I just wrote a check last month for putting banners up. But I'm good now. So I vote yes.
Anybody opposed now?
Not that I was opposed to it. I just, it was confusing me. Sorry.
But is there anywhere in here, if you catch that other non-for-profit waiver thing?
Could I have a motion to approve page three, which includes the meeting schedules?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Go on, check and make sure we're not here on Christmas Day.
Yep.
Or February 29th.
We are here on Bruce's birthday, though.
That's not a national holiday.
Yeah, no other way.
Isn't that a new business, where a motion to declare your birthday a national holiday?
I'm not sure we have that authority.
No.
Did we have a motion?
We had a motion.
We had a second? We're looking, no discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Oh, that included two items that were on page three.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody happy with those fees?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then can I have a motion to approve the next batch?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, notice the people who make the motion in seconds never sign audits down there. Audit the bills.
Well, at least I know what several means.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
I gotta sign my bill.
One day I'm going to sign it.
Is that it? We're good with that?
That's it.
Okay. Aren't you glad you stayed?
It's big.
It would have been better if I read everything, all five pages.
Next year, you'll read them all.
Next year, I won't be here. Trustees' comments.
Start with Nate.
I'll stick with the agenda tonight.
Agenda. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Meg because I think I have to do something.
Okay. Just a reminder that the Volunteer Center is honoring two exceptional volunteers on April 22nd for our annual Volunteer of the Year Awards Dinner. If you're interested in attending the event, you can call the Volunteer Center office to make a reservation. This year's honorees are both village residents, Bill Mercer and Sally Dager. Other than that, I will stick to the agenda.
Just to ask that Chuck in his canvas talks a little bit about the process of rush pickup, because we don't understand that. I have ten questions this week regarding it. And I've given my limited, limited, you know, people ask, do they come once a week? Do they come twice a week? Do they come Monday, Friday? Do they come on Tuesday? I mean, I've heard it all. So I'm interested, too, because I got some stuff.
We're out, we're out every week now till, for the month, and then we'll go to a summer schedule. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but we made it, there wasn't as much as we thought. I'm sure it's going to be a good weekend.
It's going to be more, my neighborhood, it wasn't.
Right, but it's going to be a good neighborhood, or a good weekend, so I'm sure we're going to have a lot more next week. But we made it through in three days this week. But Monday, we'll be right back out again, making our way through. Just no huge piles, no sod, no grass.
Do you work east or west?
Normally, we start, normally we start up in Candlewick. You know, we come down Genesee Street and work that way, and then Baldwin Hill, and the south side is the last. So, you know, it could be two or three days in before we get here. Normally, we can make it through in a couple of three days. But when it gets heavy, it bogs us down. So, but once we start on Monday, we'll get to you before we stop. This week, it might, this week, it might be, we might not get in on Monday and Tuesday because we're, the tub grinder might be here, and they didn't come last year. So the tub grinder, we have to work with for two, two solid days to grind up all the materials that we get all through the year. And they're scheduled to be here Monday, Tuesday.
And then lastly, for that person, what's the 10-foot piece of wood out by the street that's 12 inches thick? It's a tree?
Yeah.
What's the limitations on what goes out?
There's supposed to be four-foot pieces. You know, we, we do what we can to get them. You know, if they're too long, they won't fit in the truck. We don't take them. And what we do is, you know, people leave stumps. We don't take stumps. A lot of the stumps, they have dirt in them, they have stones in them, and it messes the grinder up. We don't take stumps. And any, and grass, we're not supposed to pick, you know, if you leave grass on the road, we're not supposed to pick that up. And if there's any issues with what they leave out, we leave a note on the door. We have a rejection list and tell them why. Usually, it's because the piles are, you know, pull up the house, there's three truckloads of piles there. You know, if a contractor cuts your tree down, the service is not for contractors. It's for yard waste, you know, unless time the contractor will come out. The contractors now are really good because most, all of them mulch everything up right then, go in the back of their trucks. But normally, the biggest problem is if the piles are too big, and people like to put sod out, and they'll bury the sod in, in the piles. And we don't take dirt, we don't take sod because we can't do anything with it.
Do you still have the parka truck?
We do. Yeah, we have the parka truck.
Convenience if somebody is going to take down a tree in their backyard?
Yep. For the bigger, for the, for the bigger piles, you know, you let us know. You know, we have to leave the truck on the driveway. We will drop that off. And if it's Friday, it'll be there till Monday. But a lot of people will call us, want it there during the day, and we need the truck during the day. So, you know, we drop it off at 3:00 and we pick it up at 7:00. So, other than Fridays, Fridays, we, we wait till Monday.
And can you remind us all where the piles of yard waste are supposed to be left?
They're not supposed to be in the road. They're supposed to be in the right way.
Wait, what? They're not supposed to be in the road?
Yeah, I know. Actually, she's the first to pick up on the road, but it's supposed to be in the right way. And when it rains, and it plugs all the gutters up and everything else. But they're supposed to be between a sidewalk and a road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for this educational session.
Or, or on the edge of their yard, if they don't have a sidewalk, it still doesn't belong in the road.
So does that mean we took care of the item F for department heads at this point?
I don't know.
I encourage my neighbors to get with their neighbors and make a pile between the two houses. That would be so much more convenient for you.
That's like pile pulling.
They have some streets that do that, and it's, and it's great for a bunch of neighbors, but then usually the neighbor that doesn't like it, it's a huge deal because it's in their yard.
I don't.
Yeah, oh, man, I'm telling you. It would be easier for us if we had one pile, no doubt.
So everybody on your street, then, can just bring their yard waste to your house?
This is on record. We got that on record, bud.
They can put whatever they want.
Big trouble, pal.
I might can say anything.
Is there anything else you'd like to comment on, Mike?
That's it.
Okay. Eric?
Okay, I got a bunch. First off, I was asked people to slow down. It's nice again. We have a very walkable community, so watch out for pedestrians and crosswalks. Just be respectful that, obviously, pedestrians don't jump out in crosswalks in front of cars. But let's be a community that's looking out for one another. I want to say, congratulations to WT Brews, the Behind the Dollar Tree, in case you've never been there. They won a gold medal for the Foreign Extra Stout at the New York State Craft Fair, which is pretty awesome. So if you need an Easter beer, stop there, try the Foreign Extra Stout. It's really good. I want to give a congratulations to Quentin Lad. He's a fifth grader at Eldon. I saw him in our town on the, I think it was previewed night. And he did a great job in that. It's pretty awesome to see a local kid who's just in fifth grade already on the stage. And a personal, a lot of healing was delivered in that third act for me. Those who don't know, we lost a junior high student the other day. Our first responders did a wonderful job. Once again, it's a very difficult time for them. Charlotte Roth, I just want to, she gave us some safe space for the kids to go for healing. Charlotte Roth, I just wanna, she gave us some safe space for the kids to go for healing. They made ribbons there. She commented during that, that the kids are getting better at making ribbons, which is just a sad thing to have to say. I mean, with two, two hard months here, it feels like a storm's been over Beeville. But, you know, it's a time of rebirth, it's a season of rebirth, and hopefully, we can move on as a community. I would just ask people to go forward, you know, realize there's a lot of people hurting out there. You know, be gentle with your words, your actions, and your beliefs. And I want to encourage those who are scared of hurting themselves, or hurting out there, because everybody hurts sometimes, you know, call a friend, text a friend, reach out to a family member. Nine-eight-eight is a great resource, you can just text that to get help if you're not feeling well, or call them, they'll call you back. They're not gonna send someone to your house or anything, it's, you know, kind of a confidential service, and they'll send someone out if you really need it in that case, but call nine-eight-eight, seek that help, okay? Everybody hurts sometimes, and as a community, I'd like just to see us, you know, take a, just be a little more gentle out there, look out for each other, okay? The mayor always says during a storm, you know, check in on those neighbors, you know, I feel like we're in a storm right now, so check in on people, okay? I love that the mayor does this, so please, please, check in on people, okay? Take care.
Thank you, Eric.
Dever. Okay, back to me. I just want to tweak the agenda a little bit. Under item E, we're gonna discuss some meter replacement and stuff, I want to give you, the board, the amount that we'll be considering is twelve thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents on that motion. And I would like to add item G, discussion in action, authorizing the DPW superintendent to break out the soffit work portion of the Village Hall project for an estimated eighty-one hundred dollars into same contractor, but to do that separately. So those things will come up for discussion later on. Other than that, I have no comments. You're up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Bruce, thank you. Following up on the brush pickup, I was talking with Shelley Hoffman the other day, and we were getting kind of giddy over the fact that it was brush pickup time. She said, why, sure, tell them where we've gone, when brush pickup is something we get excited about. People do get excited about brush pickups. It's a good sign, things are starting to grow and rebuild and so on, so we're so happy that we have that service, and I'm glad people take advantage of it. Just so that people are aware, in that annual meeting stuff, included the appointment of our, mentioning our new plan, our, our new planning board member, alternate, Mr. Nolan, who came highly referenced. It also included Tim Danny, who is now on the job as our new codes officer. While we filled a couple of things, we are still looking for a new head mechanic for the DPW, called Chuck. We're looking for somebody with experience, because this is heavy equipment, this is not a job to come to, to learn how to become a mechanic. We're also looking for somebody eventually to replace our clerk at the DPW, as Louise is planning on retiring in July, if anybody's interested in part-time work with the DPW, it's, it's good to work, it keeps you busy, a lot of things, and she takes very good care, Louise does, takes very good care of the DPW and, and the village, and if anybody's interested, again, get ahold of Chuck. I did talk, I had an email the other day with a farmer's market organizer, he is planning on coming back this year, and we will probably hear from him shortly, as far as when he plans to start and so on. Still looking for someone, and hopefully, there's somebody out there, an organization maybe, that would like to do the free concerts on Tuesday. Please contact me if you have any interest at all. It was a nice thing that the towns used to do, and they, excuse me, they have backed out of that, and we don't have a parks department, it's kind of difficult for us to do it, but if there's an organization that would like to do that, we think we can make it work for you. Let's see. I heard the casino night went very well, a lot of people showed up up at the fireside, and that's good, that's a great moneymaker. Happy Easter to everybody this weekend, and I would like to add an agenda item, item H, for an executive session for a legal matter. And other than that, it's all yours, Bruce.
Thank you. Our heads, we'll start with our attorney.
Since the mayor's asked for the executive session, I, I will go along with that, and then stick with the agenda now that it's, that it's on.
Okay, thank you. I don't know why it says codes officer next, but we're going to village clerk.
I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Treasurer.
Just one thing, we'll have next meeting, you can expect to have an investment policy from us, it's being reviewed, final reviewed, and we're probably in a really good place with it, so it's, it's nothing crazy or anything, they have to be, it's not like a tough policy or anything like that, it's very simple, straightforward. And as you know, New York state law, we, we have to be the most conservative that we can be under the law in the state, so, and this policy just puts that understanding down in paper, on paper, so. Other than that, unless there's any questions, just the agenda.
Okay, there's senior center, so we'll move on to our public works, Chuck.
Just a couple of quick things, trustee Shepard helped me out with our brush pickup, so I'm good with that, and the mayor did with our, with our mechanic that we're looking for. We are, last year, the beginning of last year, we got a five-thousand-dollar grant from NYSERTA, and we used that to purchase some LED bulbs, and the guys are replacing some of those bulbs now. We have to take transformers out of these lights and, and put the new LED bulbs in, they've got Yebbit Trail done, they've got Boder's Trails done, looks really good, we're upgrading a lot of those, there's another ten-thousand-dollar grant we also got, and we're hoping to get some of the streetlights done that warrant the power companies, some of the areas, and we're hoping to get some of that done. Want to thank trustee Stebbins for, he went to the fireside here a few weeks ago, then you could even explain what it is better than I can, but it's, the state DEC had their tree program, they, they called me, it was out of Albany, and they wanted to do, in this area, they wanted to get this section and have a, and have a, a meeting here, and I was able to get Bruce to, they wanted me to speak for twenty minutes, and I told them they lost me after five, and that's Bruce's expertise, and he went there, and they were thrilled with them, and, and I believe it went well, I want to thank you for that.
It was interesting.
Yeah.
Should have hung out.
But.
Learn about problems we'll have in the future.
Right, right, and they were thrilled, they were thrilled to come, they were thrilled with the facility down there, they went to the fireside, and they were happy with Bruce's address and the crowd, and it went well. So, other than that, unless there's questions, I'm good.
Do you want to share any parts of, since we don't have a codes officer here, of, I'm just glancing at his report he provided, and there's stuff on here that's impressive to me.
Yeah, we, we have a new, a new codes gentleman, and he's been here two days, and he's just got into the files, and, and he's, he's just checking some, some of the, some of the permits that were out, and, and getting caught up on, on, on a lot of things. We had Greg working on grants and, and stuff, too, and he's thrilled to be here, he's a retired gentleman. The last two days he was here from eight o'clock in the morning to six o'clock at night, and he's part-time, and I told him, I said, you don't have to do that, he goes, no, I want to get things straightened out, and he's talked to some people, he's, he's, he seems to be real personable.
He's handled fourteen complaints.
Yeah, yeah, and he's closed out a bunch of the older ones, he's talked to a couple of people off the fence here already, there were some people that were upset about some of the variances and stuff, and, and he got with them, he met the chief.
They fence variances, and he talked them off?
Yeah.
Sorry.
He met the chief. He met the chief, I told him, next meeting, we'll bring him to the board, so he's only been here two days, I said, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to bring him to all these meetings, just, yeah, so, next meeting, we'll, he's gonna come to public works, and we, he can come to the board, he can all can meet him, but we're fortunate to be able to get him, and he's hit the road running, and it's worked out well, it's worked out well. He gave a little report of what he's, what he's done here so far, and.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, so I hope it works out well, I do, yep.
Okay, thank you. Once you have a mic, we're moving on to our police chief, Mike.
I don't have anything specific this evening unless there's, unless there's questions. I, I will say that I did meet with Mr. D. Felice yesterday regarding his concerns, and went over a number of things. To the mayor's point, Lieutenant Lockwood, some time ago, had sat in on a meeting, again, at that meeting, they were just presenting ideas from the school district, there was no, certainly no nefarious decision not to share that with the residents of the community there, it was just an informational session for, for village employees, and Lieutenant Lockwood represented the police department at, at that meeting. But I did meet with Paul yesterday, and we had a nice conversation in my office for, well, about forty-five minutes to an hour or so, I would say, and went over some different things, and certainly, with that proposal, I think there's some issues to be addressed, like with any proposal, and it'll be up to the board as to, as to how you want to proceed with that, so. Unless there's questions by the board. I would certainly second all the commentary that trustee Ryanicle had to say.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. New business. I have a motion to authorize the mayor of the village of Bonzal to execute and submit an application to the county of Onadaga for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant.
Moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? I would like, Dick, I'd like to mention that you sent out to us maps and, and stuff, and it excluded Community Park on their map of what would be eligible, but last, I believe last year or the year before, they did the same thing, Steve had to contact somebody in county, that they weren't recognizing that Community Park was in the village, that it fits the criteria for the town of Van Buren, but they didn't realize it was ours. So I don't know, you know.
I did talk to somebody from Community Development, and he said, anything, anything you do in a park, it's okay anyways.
Okay.
Because it's, it's considered generally, if you do, if you do something for the elderly, or if you do something for the disabled, that's considered like poverty level people, just for the sake of qualifying the project. So, anything we do in a park that makes it easier for people to move around, you know, we did the playground in Community Park, that type of stuff. We did have, number one, on the item was, originally was Community Park taking the trails that go through the woods and paving them, but Chuck and talking to people, they said that would be very difficult, and would be very costly, because trying to get vehicles through woods to pave. So we switched and went with the Kerry Park, which qualifies anyways because of, of income levels, but also because it's a park. So, yes, they, they continue to make that look like it's not qualifying in Community Park, but everything we've asked to have done down there, they do.
The trail in Community Park might also be an issue with Army Corps when we get there. I mean, you might want to do some legwork first before we ever propose, put it into a proposal for money. For those of you who are interested in democratic process, the community development, they do a census of our community, of all communities, and based upon income levels are where we can apply to put projects in, whether it's a sidewalk or whatever it is, and we have to meet those criteria. And in the village of Baldwinsville, there's a, some of the south side of the village, and there's a little piece up at the end of East Anita Street, but not, not a lot of the village anymore, it's all, the cemetery is, but we're not doing that.
Yet, eventually, we all will.
Nah. Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we, in a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You are now authorized, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to rehire Kathy Walsh as a temporary part-time court clerk at a rate of sixteen sixty-six effective April third, 2023?
I make the motion.
I will second it.
Second?
Okay.
Can I just put per hour?
Well, yeah, I, I think it's per hour.
No, that's all you're getting paid.
I don't think, I don't think she'll come back.
Oh, I, yeah, that's good.
Is there any, any comments?
I don't recognize the name, when was she?
The rehire, yeah.
When did she work?
She did work for the, um, the state department.
So it's not a rehire in the court?
Yep.
Just a rehire is a.
Dick Long was out there with an injury.
Okay.
And so she gave in, did his work, and the court now has, is short a deputy clerk, and she was willing to do it, and she's very good, and she's already on her books, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Can I, can I?
I think it's a hire, not a rehire. It's a different position. But whatever, semantics.
Can I just make an observation about these motions, and, and something that I, a discipline that I kind of would like the board to adopt going forward? When, when we're gonna hire somebody, the hourly rate is important, but I think that this is not a budgeted position, and so it's, it's important to put some parameters around what the total expense might be, because this is just an open checkbook, this motion, it's an hourly rate, and she could work five thousand hours from now until the end of the year. And so it's, there, there should be, and I'll leave the format up to you, some discipline about not to exceed two hundred hours, revisit it on this date, whatever, renew the motion on this date, or, or whatever, just so that we can do appropriate budget planning in, in how we're gonna pay for her. So, that's just my two cents. I saw it before when we, there was somebody else that we hired, and we stated the hourly rate, and they're working like forty hours a week, and, and the expense, just from the time that we hired them, which was last fall, until the end of the year, was like twenty thousand dollars. So I know it's easy to approve an hourly rate of like fifteen dollars and whatever, but you're really approving an expense of twenty thousand dollars, and that's kind of what's significant about the motion, to me, at least, and maybe that's just me being the treasurer, but.
Paul, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
They've had a deputy treasurer in the past, was this not budgeted this year, this position?
She's, she's basically just taking Debs Alatos out because Deb is not here, so she's basically Deb in Deb's absence until Deb comes back in June or July.
But are we paying Deb?
No.
So, yeah, so even, so even an acknowledgement of that is that you, you understand how we're gonna pay for it, I guess, is, is the, conceptually, what I'm looking for. In the one I was talking about from last fall, they were, it was add to staff, and so we, and we approved it, and I, I just want, I just want you to have the, the realization of what the, the dollar amount is that you're approving and spending.
Well, I like the concept of, you know, when we hire a seasonal lawnmower, there's a start date, there's an end date.
Right.
And if we want to extend them for another three months, we can do that.
Yeah.
So I could see where we, this would be good to have first meeting in June or July or something, and we can revisit it. Do we want to amend that motion to do that now? With this one, or?
Yes, I think so.
We'll start right off.
Do we have anticipation of when, how long she'll be here?
Um, it depends on how long Deb is having disability right now, I believe it's till May thirtieth, so probably, you know, that's all I know right now.
Right.
Well, it'd be basically twenty hours a week until May thirtieth, and then we'll revisit it then?
Why don't we make it June fifteenth?
Sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents, not twenty dollars, oh, twenty hours.
Yeah, it's hours. Yeah, 20 hours.
And if we make it for the meeting of June 15?
Or even June 1. I mean, June 1, we meet, right?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying disability things sometimes are kind of hard to nail down.
They usually got to put them in, though, like, the day of.
But it gives us, whatever, gives, I was giving us some leeway.
They're both not going to work at the same time, so I would say it's cool. They could meet, cover us.
Okay.
Do I need a motion to amend the, the motion, or did we amend the motion to include that date? We haven't voted on it.
Yeah, you could take it, amend the motion, and then...
Who made the motion?
I think it was me.
Megan and Nate.
Yeah.
So, Megan and Nate.
So we're going to revise my motion to rehire Kathy Walsh as a temporary part-time clerk at a rate of 1666 per hour, effective April 3 through June, what?
15th.
2023.
15th. At typically 20 hours a week, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, for, at 20 hours per week.
I like that. That's a good motion.
Would you second that?
Thanks.
Again?
Yeah.
Does that work for you, you think?
Is that better?
Yeah, because you can do the math on that. Whatever that is, eight weeks times 20 times whatever, you're earning $20 a week.
Before you vote, could I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I would maybe modi, I would suggest that you modify your motion again, just to indicate an average of 20 hours a week, only because I know from, in our shop, if your full-time clerk is out sick for a week, and that person fills in, technically, they'd be in violation. So if you do an average, that's what we do over there, is we just...
That's what I meant when I said 20 hours a week. I meant an average of...
It was implied.
Just like the, the 1666 was implied as per hour. I meant per average.
I just know, we have an issue if somebody's on vacation, Dick works for 40 hours a week, so technically, they'd be in violation of that motion, that's all.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion to declare Friday, April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the village of Baldwensville.
I will make a second.
For discussion, Chuck, have you picked a home for the tree?
We are not.
Okay.
We will.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Every year, as part of being a tree city, which we've been for 37 years, one of the things we do is plant a tree on Arbor Day. It's a street tree, so if you need a tree in front of your house, let us know. Item D, a motion to purchase a John Deere backhoe from Five Star Equipment in the amount of $96,817.61. This is a budgeted item, largely here to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would just note for the record that this is a state contract, state bidding, so that, for that reason, the, the normal bidding process doesn't take place, because it's through, through the state purchasing contracts.
And Chuck, would you take an opportunity at this point to tell us the difference between the $146,000 price tag and...
Right, the, that's the machine cost. We get it, we get a state, state contract price on that, brings it down to that. Our current machine, we got a great price for our current machine. Our current machine, we got $50,000 on trade. That was $5,000 more than the competitor asked for, so we're happy about that. Then they, we got another $3,000 in tires on it. We got some extra things on the unit. We're thrilled to, the unit we have now is, it's still running great. It's just, it's time to trade up, and everything lined up between the state contract pricing. And what they're doing now is they're buying your old machines back. And we get $50,000 for the one we had, which I think it was $70,000 we paid for that. So we, we worked out really well with that. And we can't get it till January, you know, because it's like everything else. And they're going to hold our, our trade price until January, so we'll use it from now until January and then trade up. So it, it worked out well for us. It's, it's a great price. It's a great machine, and we're just thrilled to get it. And it is a budgeted item, too. And we were, we came in almost $50,000 under, under budget for some of that, so it went well.
All in favor?
Tried not to tell Mark that.
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, can I have a motion, giving the DPW superintendent permission to purchase 21-inch meters and wearable radio readers to replace the old meters at Conifer Village where they're for an amount of $12,344.60?
This is all part of our meter reprogram, replacement program. One inch and below, we, we maintain. One inch and above, the, the property owner does.
Can I have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Can I have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Sorry. What I just said. And the, the Conifer, they're redoing all the buildings over there, and it's, it's time to get in there. The half, we're not getting readings from half of them now, because all the wires are tore out, and it's a good time to get in, and it's part of the program, so that's why we're bringing it to the board now.
It's only 20 meters?
It's just only 20. Most of ours are 5 eights.
Big meters.
But the, the 1 inches for the bigger buildings, and so we don't, we don't have any...
Is it 1 meter per building, or is there...
Correct. Yes. And, and they originally put them, buy them when they put them in, and then we redo them, and they've been in there for more than 20 years.
What's the price difference between a half inch or 5 eights and a 1 inch? Because that seems awful.
Well, it doesn't matter, because they need the volume. You know, the, the 5 eights won't give them the volume of water. The price difference is probably a couple hundred dollars.
That's a...
Yeah, yeah. No, they're more expensive, no doubt. But, you know, the bigger buildings need more volume of water. They can't get through the smaller meters.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Can I just chime in real quick, too? The intent, I want to be sure that I'm clear on the intent. The intent is to pay for this from the water fund, right?
You bet.
Not reserves, just right, right out of the water fund budget slash regular savings, and where there's, there's funds available.
Okay. Tipping into the fund balance if need be. Okay, motion for the mayor to sign the Pyrotechnico Fireworks Inc. contract for Seneca River Days that includes a provision to provide insurance coverage. If not provided within 14 days after the execution of the contract, the village has the right to void the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Anyone second?
Nobody wants to second it?
Oh, I'll second it.
Yeah.
I love fireworks. I'll second it, sure.
Any discussion? I could fill people in. This is what we've done every year. Within 14 days, I assume that's saying, once our insurance provider provides you the price of a carrier, the Rotary Club of Baldwensville will give you the money for it.
Now, we're getting, we're having trouble getting their insurance, because he's saying that they can't give us insurance until Dick signs the contract. So we, they want the contract signed first before they will give us any insurance. But normally, what we do for any waivers or anything is to get the insurance first, then we sign the contract. So that's why we had to put that provision in.
So this isn't our carrier, for a...
It is, but it's separate. We're just trying to get the insurance so we could proceed, and they can't get it to us until they have the contract.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Mike likes fireworks. Carried. Item G, discussion, action, authorizing the DPW superintendent to portion out the soffit work on the Village Hall project for a sum of $8100. This is the same contractor that would be doing the entire job, but can get this...
It's the same contractor. We're doing the insulation. We're running some problems with the insulation, and we want to get this part done. You know, it's, it's spring. Some of this, around this building looks terrible, and we're going to break that out, and if we can get the approval tonight, and we'll get them started on that.
So we want a motion to do that?
No, we're not.
Can I have a motion?
Ah, motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is where the democratic process ends.
Yeah.
You should have Chuck and Mike stay.
Chuck and Mike, okay. How about Bob? Do you want the attorney, I assume?